So I'd like to call the Monday, February 14th, 2022 zoning board of appeals meeting to order. It is seven o'clock. We are just going to postpone starting for just a minute to see if Mr. Ullar, who is our vice chair, is on his way. And once we get confirmation from that, we will move forward.
Okay. All right. So we'll just go ahead. Is it just, do we go alphabetical? How do we pick the alternates? I think, I think. Yes. I think alphabetical makes the most sense. Okay.
Okay. So we will officially call the meeting to order at 7:02. We do have, Mr. Ullar had, is not in attendance, so we will be seating one of our alternates tonight. And we will do that alphabetically. So Mr. Riley, if you would come up, please, if you are comfortable with serving tonight in Mr. Ullar's place. And once he is seated, we will, meeting will be called to order, and we will stand and do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If we could have roll call, please.
Gazun.
Here.
Krug.
Here.
Alpin, McAlpine.
Here.
McDonald.
Here.
Ullar. Ward.
Here.
Wilner.
Here.
So we do have a full quorum tonight for this evening's meeting. So we have confirmed that. Next up will be the approval of the agenda. We all have that in, in front of us tonight, and we did have it in the pocket that we received last week. If everyone can take a look at the agenda and let us know if there's any changes or revisions they would like made. If not, we will need a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Support.
Okay, he's on his way.
He is on his way. He's three minutes away.
Okay.
Do you need a roll call for approval of the agenda?
Yes. So Mr. Gazan was the, made the motion, and Ms. Ward made the second.
Gazun.
Yes.
Krug.
Yes.
McAlpine.
Yes.
McDonald.
Yes.
Riley.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Wilner.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next up is the approval of our minutes. Our last meeting was on January 11th, 2022. We all received the meeting minutes in our pocket, as well as we have them in our place today. If there are any changes or revisions to the minutes, we should discuss those now. And if not, we do need a motion to approve them as they've been presented. Are there any comments or questions on them?
I'll move to support the minutes from the January 11th, 2022 meeting.
Support.
I just have two quick revisions on six and seven.
Pages.
Pages six and seven. The third little line states Chair Alpine. It just needs to be McAlpine. And the same for the top line on page seven.
Thank you, and apologies.
Oh, no worries. So we did have a motion on those. If that motion stands with those revisions, then we can move forward with a vote.
So, so approved, Madam Chairman, or so accepted, Madam Chairman.
Support.
Gazun.
Yes.
Krug.
Yes.
McAlpine.
Yes.
McDonald.
Yes.
Riley.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Wilner.
Yes.
Motion passes.
So next up would be the first item of old business, which is application PBA 11-21, the residence at 1490 Franklin, and appeal interpretation and/or use variance as to whether the definition of a home occupation includes a federally licensed firearm dealer. Given Mr. Ullar is so close, I'm wondering, is it appropriate for us to possibly, like, address the staff or the board member report, or should we just wait till he arrives?
Madam Chair, may I make a recommendation?
Sure.
That we take a five-minute break and await Mr. Ullar's attendance.
Everyone in agreement with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you need a motion to that effect?
I don't think so.
I believe the chair can call a recess.
Yeah. So I'll just call a recess for five minutes until Mr. Ullar comes in.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe I just saw a moving shadow. And I hear an opening door.
I bet he was out to dinner with his wife. Oh, there he is.
Please enter.
Yes.
I have a miles if you need one.
Thank you, Mr. Riley.
Thank you.
So we'll give you a second to get settled. We have done call to order, the pledge, roll call. We have a quorum. We've approved the minutes, the agenda, and we are actually at our first item of old business, which is the application PBA 1121-1490, appeal interpretation and/or use variance as to whether the definition of a home occupation includes a federally licensed firearm dealer. So I will call the meeting back to order, and we will proceed. If you would like to give us some background on this, please.
Absolutely. As you know, at your last meeting, you had a public hearing on this case. And in your motion, you asked that a number of things be done. You voted to table the application till it's meeting on February 14th, 2022, with a request of staff to consult with the city manager about the process of drafting a letter, and instructions of staff to draft a motion for modification based on the fact that the business is a transfer of goods rather than a sale of goods, to have that motion reviewed by corporation counsel or the city attorney, and to research if any direct sales, and to ask the applicant to research if any direct sales by Wolverine State Armory had occurred since 2017. So per your request, I did sit down with Mr. Baumgarten, who is here today. Also, the copy of the letter that is the heart of this appeal is at your station tonight, just so you have that. I believe it was in your last packet, but it may have gotten lost, not only paper-wise, but in your memory since the last time. Mr. Baumgarten said that the letter was drafted by the community development director at the time, Erin Schluto, but it was signed by him since Ms. Schluto was leaving her position at the city of Berkeley. He said that the phrase "conversations with me" should have really been "conversations with staff." He's here and available to answer questions for you all tonight. In addition, I spoke to John Casens at the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms on the telephone. Per our conversation, I sent him a request for information, and you received the response, and that was in your packet tonight. He stated that the records don't distinguish between direct sales and transfers. So he couldn't tell the city whether a direct sale by the applicant had occurred since 2017. Per your request, then also, Chair McAlpine clarified to me in an email today that one of the things that she was hoping to see was an inquiry to the city's Public Safety Division, and had there been any neighbor complaints about this particular address. I asked today and received a response that no neighbor complaints had been received since, I use the date, January 1st, 2017. The applicant has also submitted paperwork in response to your request, and that was included in your packet. Finally, there's a draft motion at the end of our letter that was reviewed by the city attorney. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. That is just an example that perhaps you could use. I will remind you that there are three actions that you can take. You can affirm the decision of the city manager. You can reverse it wholly or in part, or you can modify the order, requirement, decision, or determination. After the public hearing, you must reach this decision within 90 days. And so 90 days, the last meeting that you have that's within that window is your April 11th meeting. So per the zoning ordinance, you do not have to make a decision tonight. The other thing that I would like to note is that whatever decision you make, whether you make a decision on the appeal, or whether you make a decision on the use variance, there is some precedence that's being set. So if you make, if you choose to affirm, modify, or reverse the city manager's decision, that's also interpretation of the home occupation definition. And any other resident of Berkeley who's looking to establish a similar home-based business would be looking at this decision in terms of guidance, as would future staff. So please take that into account. If you decided to look at a use variance and then ended up granting that, know that the use variance runs with the land. So it would run with this particular land. If the applicant moved, that would not go with him. However, you did set a precedent where you would be looking, perhaps need to seriously contemplate giving a use variance of a similar type in the future, based on that decision. So in summary, we did draft a modification. There are several points on it that, so it says, "The City of Berkeley Board of Zoning Appeals find a modification administrative decision by city manager Baumgarten to deny Wolverine State Armory as a home occupation based upon the definition of home occupation in Section 13832 of the city's ordinances is warranted based on the following findings. The public hearing held on January 11th, 2022, additional information was provided by the applicant, his business partner, residents of the adjacent neighborhood, and the general public. Two, based on the testimony by the business owner at the public hearing, Wolverine State Armory is paid for facilitating paperwork for transfer of ownership of firearms between his customers and a third party. Number three, the Type I federally licensed firearm dealer allows both direct sales of firearms and the transfer of ownership. Four, the city Berkeley can restrict to a home-based business of this nature to transfers only for compliance with definition of the home-based business. Five, residents from neighboring properties testified at the public hearing that Wolverine State Armory does not generate more vehicular or foot traffic than a single-family homes in the neighborhood. Six, while Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms and Explosives, ATF, cannot restrict direct sales of this type of license, the ATF, if made aware of municipal restrictions on licenses, will look for compliance with those restrictions as part of its inspections and license renewal processes. Seven, the city may require the following for Wolverine State Armory or any Type I federally licensed firearms dealer operating in the city as a home occupation: A, advertising of any nature may not include direct sales; B, annual supplemental paperwork noting the number and type of transactions. While the city attorney was comfortable with this, and I had a telephone conversation with him about it, he did question the purpose of items 7A and B, and how really, how it would be monitored, what's really the role of the city in regards to zoning enforcement. We asked for this paper, then what would we do with it? And also, when our discussion came up, what was in the ATF's responses is that basically, they do not distinguish in their record-keeping between direct sales and transfers. So they are not going to police that. Also, the licenses, the license renewal and whatnot, they, they only come, you know, they come once every three years. They won't necessarily, if it's the same address, check back with the municipality unless there's something like a complaint. And that's what brought this, that's what brought this to the city manager's attention, and to the city's attention for this time. And that led to the city manager's letter where they denied it as a home-based business based on its retail nature. Be happy to answer any questions. Also, city manager Baumgarten is here and can answer any questions about those conversations and how the letter was developed.
Do we have any questions?
Point of clarification. So we have two actions tonight. One is determine the appeal by Mr. Novak for an interpretation. And we can either approve, modify, or deny.
Reverse.
Reverse, sorry. And then the second is if we do modify, or then we would have to have a clarification on a use variance. So there would be two actions, correct?
The only way that you would need to act on the use variance would be, is if you supported the decision of the city manager.
Okay, all right.
Because then their next route for appeal would be the use variance, and then we could have that discussion.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay. Is the petitioner present? If you could, please come up and state your name and address for the record.
Steven Noack, 1490 Franklin, Berkeley, Michigan, 48072.
So you heard Ms. Minock presents the most updated information we have. I don't know if there's anything you would like to share with us, or you'd like to add to what she's already shared.
I'm open for any questions that anyone might have, and request for the proof of transfer only from 2017. I pulled our sales tax records, which there's been no direct sales provided, proof of that with our Michigan sales tax records. We have to, anything we'd sell directly, we have to pay the state of Michigan. So I included those filings in there as well for you.
I do have one question, because you did say you did do one sale in our last meeting.
I, after double checking, there was nothing.
Okay.
2017 is a while back, so.
Okay. Are there any other questions from my fellow commissioners?
And per social media, switched everything on the website, Facebook. The only issue was Google. They limit the options you have. You can't write in. The one spot you can write in, I wrote in, FPL transfers only. So anything pertaining to direct sales or orders has been removed.
But we still do show that there are comments from people who have purchased from you. There were 20, there were reviews in 2022 about they, you had a very swift sale, and it was easy to make a purchase from you.
They're referring to transfers. A lot of people don't distinguish the terminology from sale to transfer, so.
And I would also say that some of your Instagram posts imply that you do sell as well. That you.
Very minimal on Instagram.
Well, there are posts from 2020 that.
Anything on social media regarding direct sales has been removed, so.
Okay. I saw them today.
I'm not aware of the ones you're speaking of, but every, all the information about us is, has been removed from that. So if you can tell me specifically, I'd be happy to.
I would just suggest you go back and look at some of your posts, because they do imply there is some type of sale.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions from anyone?
I mean, you're saying here today that there hasn't been a public sale since 2017.
I haven't taken money for a firearm directly, as sold from me since at least 2017. That was as far back as I pulled the records from, anyway. And then, as was stated, the ATF has never, it's not a requirement for them. So within the ATF records that I have, our bottom book, for instance, which is everything that comes in and out, shows you who it comes in from, who it goes out to. That's not a requirement in there. Obviously, moving forward, I haven't had direct sales in ages, so it wouldn't have been reflected in there, even if we, you know, were doing direct sales, which was not the case.
No other questions for the petitioner at this point? Okay. Well, if we have any questions, we'll call you back up.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. We'll now open it up to the public. Is there anyone from the audience who wishes to speak on this matter? Okay, seeing as there is no one here, we will go back and open it back up for discussion and determine what we want to do with, moving forward on this particular request. Yes, Mr. Wilner?
I mean, I guess I would make a comment, really, more than a question, but, so I would, you know, at first, be hesitant to approve it based on the license, the actual license allowing direct sales. However, what the draft motion has, that the city can restrict it to transfers only, I would be okay with that.
Ms. Ward?
Madam Chair, I think the city attorney mentioned that, that how do we ensure that it is transfers only, and that it's not sales as well. It's really difficult to monitor something like that. We would have to be dependent upon the license holder in order to be assured that no direct sales occurred for a year, or for whatever period of time the city chose. And I think, I don't know who would be responsible within the city. Perhaps Mr. Baumgartner could answer which staff member would be responsible for monitoring this.
This would be monitoring whether direct sales are happening.
Mm-hmm.
That would be difficult to do if they're happening inside the home, inside the structure. I'm not sure that we have the capacity to monitor that.
Okay.
I mean, in the city attorney's comments, what I read, he wasn't questioning, the only thing he was questioning was that item number seven on A and B, not actually monitoring the sales. But yes, I get your point.
Okay. Madam Chair, I have something, and this may fall under, if there is a decision to support Mr. Baumgartner's letter, then this may pertain to the use variance, if we go there. I decided to take a look at our code, and I found that under Section 138-31, Article 2, addresses industrial areas in the code. And according to the city, the 11-mile corridor, and I believe it's from Greenfield to Coolidge, although it may, it is, okay, is designated an industrial area. Under Section 138-3, then there's Section 138, Article 5, Division 5.5, that says that this section of the code addresses warehousing. And if I could, warehousing is about the process of storing physical inventory for sale or distribution. Warehouses are used by all different types of businesses that need to temporarily store products in bulk before either shipping or delivering them to either another location or individually to an end customer. And I would liken this to, say, for instance, you go out to Gardner White, and you buy yourself a sofa. Well, you don't have all the money. And so they say, well, we'll let you put it on layaway. You can pay $100 a month for six months, and then you'll get your sofa. So every month, you truck out to Gardner White, you put down $100. And at the end of the six months, you get your sofa. What have they been doing with your sofa? But they have been warehousing it. And to me, this is the same process here. It's a much smaller product. It's not a sofa, but it's a gun. And in essence, the petitioner is warehousing guns up to 10 a month. He told us that at the last meeting. And that until, it would be likened to, until the paperwork is done, in essence, until you pay off your loan on your sofa, and until the paperwork and the federal regulatory agency grants your background check, he is the holder of the guns. So in essence, he's warehousing them. He's holding on to them until you're approved to be allowed to take the gun home. So I just bring that to our attention of the board, that warehousing does not belong in an R1 zone, which is residential. And I just bring that to the board's attention.
I guess I would disagree with the characterization of warehousing. I mean, what if it's 10 baseball cards, or, you know, 10?
It's still warehousing. It could be Beanie Babies.
It's not. It's your choice of the use of the word. I mean, it could be putting them in a drawer. It's not really warehousing. It's just.
Well, he's putting these in a safe.
I mean, what bothers me about the whole thing still is that I don't think we'd be here if they weren't guns.
True.
Right? I mean, let's be honest. It's, somebody didn't like guns, and they made a complaint that was pretty much a lie. I think we're all in agreement now that whoever made that complaint to the ATF was lying about the foot traffic. And because of that, the city's changed what it's been doing for three or four years. And that bothers me. I mean, I. I mean, I, I guess I'd like to ask Mr. Baumgartner, how, you know, what, the letter, the conversations that happened with Ms. Schluto, do you know what they were? I mean, are there notes? I mean, Ms., Erin must have talked, according to that, what, what we've been told, Erin talked with the petitioner and somehow concluded that he's, he's selling guns, is what it sounds like. I mean, the, the sentence of the letter that says, "Based on conversations with the property ordinance, 1490 Franklin, the business Wolverine State Armory is considered a retail business." So what was, what was the nature of those conversations that was said to Ms. Schluto that made her conclude that?
There was the, the, the what they were selling was irrelevant, and I appreciate the, the opportunity to clarify that. The, the what was irrelevant. As when it was brought to our attention from the ATF that this was going on inside this home and they started to detail the process by which they delivered the goods to the individual, that is where we started to look to the home-based occupation ordinance to see if it was an allowable type of business under that option, under that. Based on the conversations that Ms. Schluto had with Mr. Novak, he, he detailed, so the business model, how he delivers stuff, what the, what happens on sites, whether or not individuals come to, to receive their goods. Those conversations were process-based. And that, after concluding that, or after concluding that those, getting a good sense of how the, the business operated, we applied that to the standards set forth by the ordinance, and that's where we felt it did not meet that ordinance. And in my conversations with Erin, we crafted this letter together, and then I eventually signed my name on it, knowing that Erin would not be present to, to go through this process or to represent that decision. So the, again, I cannot stress enough that the what they were selling was irrelevant. It was the process by which they, they conducted the business.
But what did he tell her? I mean, it says based on the conversations. I mean, so what did, what, what is Erin saying that he told her that made her conclude that it was retail?
That, again, you would, you would go to the house, you would see your, your goods there, you were, you filled out paperwork there, that they weren't able to be mailed. He couldn't operate in a way that some of our, our home-based business is supposed to be, where you would do, there's no goods and services exchanged at the house. In this case.
So he didn't tell her that he was selling guns? He said, he told her the same thing he told us.
He knew he would, I mean, we, the, the what it was, was, was well-known. He did not hide that at any point. He, we all knew.
The letter says includes in-person purchase.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so that's what I'm saying. Like, he, he, he said he never said that, and this is saying, this kind of reads like he did say that.
Yeah, so the.
So are you, are you acknowledging now that he did not tell Ms. Schluto or anybody that he was selling guns there?
Much like Ms. Novak said up here, the direct sales and the, the trades and the transfers, stuff like that, it all largely was, we didn't really differentiate it either, and we didn't think our ordinance did either. So the process by which somebody obtained their weapons, they went to the house, they, they got that item, that was considered to be more like a retail business than what the ordinance would allow.
So, so if he's, like, let's say he's fixing guns, or he's fixing chainsaws, or he's fixing something, you know, he's just, what do we do if that, that, that case comes before us next? Or, you know, if he's just? I, I, I mean, think of the example, yeah. Like, you know, we were talking about online things last time. I mean, the analysis is going to be exactly the same, then?
That, we're restricted by the text of the ordinance. You should not be conducting retail operations out of the home.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm just concerned that what, what we do here tonight does set precedent and that going forward, we will have to live with that precedent. And so this is why I think we need to tread very carefully.
And once again, I think it is important for us to remember, whatever is taking place in, in the transfer from him to whoever it is, it's not what, we are not thinking about what it is specifically, but just the action or the activity versus what the material item is. So yes, our decision then applies to someone selling cookies, someone selling crocheted blankets, towels, what, whatever we may.
This is like a fishing license or?
He's not actually selling anything. He's really transferring. So the ordinance needs to either be written to say you can't transfer goods. I mean, he's really not, he's really not selling anything. He's selling the service. He's not selling the good, the goods, the goods are being transferred.
And also to add to that, the Madam Chair, what you, we're just talking about the, this is actually very specific to this particular type of item, and that's because the ATF requires that, that that paperwork being done at that location in which the license transfer is being, you know, being handled. So it, it is a very specific item that, it's not like any other item that you can get at a retail store or anything else. It's very specific on how weapons have to be handled, and it has to be handled by somebody licensed, and after all the criminal background checks and everything are done, then wherever that person's licensing is at, has, that's where the paperwork has to be concluded and the item be given to the person who has bought it online. If I'm, if I'm correct, is that correct? Okay.
So, so part of, I think, the, I think part of the problem is, is this particular type of license does allow for the sale. I think that's where we're getting caught up, where if I am selling cookies and I am baking them in my house and I want to sell them, I can go to the police station, I can go to Walgreens and hand them to the buyer, where in this particular case, that cannot happen. That, this transfer has to be done specifically at this address. So that is, that is a point of differentiation as well.
According to, if I may, according to number six of the draft motion, if we make a restriction that there are no direct sales, then the ATF will put that into, take that into account the next time they do an inspection in three years when he has to go back, if I'm reading that right.
Right, but if you, we look back at, the, question number two was, does the ATF craft the type of transactions? And they do not.
They don't, but if we do, then they, then they can make that part of their licensing.
No, they cannot make it a part of the licensing.
Oh, they can't, okay.
It says in here they can. I mean, I guess maybe it was.
That's our draft, that's not their, their answer.
Our, our draft is that we could restrict more than they, more than the ATF can. And if they were doing inspections, if they were looking at licensing again, then they would consult back with the municipality. But when, in my conversations with Mr. Kaisens, said that usually the licenses are approved as the applicant has said, as kind of a matter of course, and the inspections are not necessarily frequent. So from my point of view, as your staff and in discussions with your attorney, to both of us, it seemed like the ATF could not be depended upon to police, whether it's a direct sale or whether it's a transfer of goods, that that would fall to the city. So if that is key, the monitoring of that, if that is key to your decision to modify, please take into account what the city manager has told you, is that there's really not staff to do that, nor can we go into their home and look at those. Really where it would come up is if the applicant transferred addresses, or if another license came in that was new, then the ATF would come to the municipality and ask us to sign off.
Nor would we be able to be, put a requirement in here that on a quarterly year, and whatever basis, that the ATF then provide us that report, because they don't track it.
They don't track it. And the other thing I will mention that it was not in the review is that the city does not require a license for a home-based business. The city requires a license for all other types of businesses, whether they are owner-occupied or whether they are leased space. And that, and also the city requires a license for any rental. So when you had the duplex use variance before you two months ago, the lapse of that license is what trips that off. So keep in mind, the city only has so many policy opportunities or policy trips, if you will, to come in and monitor.
And then, of course, the, the enforcement, we said, we agree, we, there is no monitoring or enforcement, other than complaints.
Other than.
If there is a complaint, then an investigation could go forward. And I, at this point, I don't think there have been any complaints, except the one anonymous that.
Mr. Riley? If we could just keep your interaction just to us forward and not with the petitioner, please. I, I know, I'm just, I just, I just want to make sure that we're very transparent in how we, how we act, that's all. Mr. Henan, or Councilman Henan, I'm sorry.
Yeah, your comment on Instagram had me curious, and I looked, I found a Instagram account, @WolverineState, named Wolverine State Armory. The logo on it matches the logo on their website. And a post from February 19th, 2020 states, "We still have so arrow-stripped lowers in stock, eighty dollars out, out the door."
What was the phrase again? Arrow stripped what?
Lowers.
Okay, sir, you want to come back up and?
Those are gun parts that are sold on auction sites, online and shipped out, not sold directly from the house at all, so.
So what are you, eighty, yeah, you say eighty dollars out the door, what's, so what are you, how are you selling them?
Because we're, we're shipping them out to other dealers, essentially. So it's, it's all back stock, so it's not going to, you know, individuals directly from us. It's going, shipping out to another dealer.
But if I followed you on Instagram and I read that, couldn't I call your phone number and say I live in Birmingham? Can I come pick this up?
Let me tell you, but it's not going to happen. I mean, I tell people that all the time. We're transfers only, we don't get, and we don't even have inventory anymore, so.
Wait, what do you mean auction? I, I, I'm not following.
It's like items how we get into transfer. Many people do that and then ship them out, mostly out of state, to other dealers, to then do the same thing.
So, so what's the point of that post? Like, what, what's it conveying and to who and why? Like?
Just that they're there and we can send them out to another dealer for you and get them out. It was, again, old inventory, and we ended up selling them on gunbroker.com, which is an auction site, and shipping them out.
So you have inventory that you, that you are selling?
Not directly here, at all.
Well, you had, you had it, you were.
Had inventory.
Yeah, we had it in the past, but it's not a direct sale out of the house at all.
Who, who gets the eighty dollars?
We get the eighty dollars from the dealer, yeah.
But you had them.
We had them in the past, yeah.
Madam Chair, wouldn't that be considered retail sales? I, I, I don't know. I, I, I'm asking the, the petitioner.
I just struggle because there's like such a fine line, like, it's, it's, it's such a fine blurry line.
So like, how many arrow-stripped lowers are at your, at your house right now? And what, so that, that, what's that like, a, a lowers a sight or something, or?
It's not, just a part of a gun.
So how many of those are there right now?
I don't think we have any in stock right now. I'd have to double check, but I'm almost positive.
How many did you have?
We had 12 at one point, and we got them a long time ago.
I mean, to me, this is just so, I mean, I, I guess I'm discussing again rather than asking a question.
Okay, I think we're good. I think we'll, thank you.
Thank you.
No problem.
Okay. Comments?
I mean, I, it's hard because it's just, you know, I didn't really think that as the zoning board, we'd be the ones kind of like narrowing in on trying to define what is retail use, which is kind of what it seems like. I mean, we could probably go on Craigslist and find, you know, 100 people in Berkeley who are violating this if we take that, if we take that definition, right? You know, eighty bucks out the door for arrow-stripped lowers. I mean, I'm sure there are all kinds of people selling various things out of their house that they got here or there, or they're running, you know, eBay businesses or this, that, and the other thing. And I don't think that that's, I, I don't know. To me, that's not retail, but maybe people have a different idea.
Madam Chair?
I, I do think that there's a pretty marked issue with the applicant, not the applicant, yeah, the applicant, like, has kind of created the wrong impression online. And I don't know whether it's, it's like we don't really have any records to show exactly what's been sold out of there, or, you know.
Mr. Baumgartner?
I, I would just say that what, what we looked at from enforcement question would be whether or not the applicant was able to fulfill the orders off-site, mailing them like an eBay business would. And the conversations that Ms. Schluto had with the owner and then with the ATF, it was noted that they were not allowed to mail them. The license restricted them to doing the, to actually, the transfer of the good had to happen on premises. So I do want to differentiate somebody who is running an eBay business or, you know, some marketplace website where it's a one-off, you know, that's, that's different than actually owning, having a business located at the home and being able to mail your good to whoever the purchaser is, is more in line with the text of the, the home-based business ordinance than what we felt the, the businesses outlined, this business as outlined to us was.
I mean, I get the, the gun part has to be transferred in the house, but the, that little accessory kind of thing, that seems like, the Instagram post doesn't make it or break it for me. That, that, that sounds more like a, that sounds more like a, you know, an eBay kind of thing. The question to me is if, if he was actually, you know, Joe Schmo said, hey, I want to go buy a, you know, semi-auto or whatever, or a rifle, and he could go there and buy one or not. And it, it sounds like he's saying that hasn't happened since 2017. We don't have anything definite to show that it did, an actual gun getting sold there since 2017.
Sure, if you'd like to come up, please.
I mean, it was my understanding from last time that he was able to go somewhere and transfer their goods somewhere else. Like, you've met, you said you've met people somewhere.
No, that was brought up.
That was me. I, I, I was, I was talking about somebody I knew that had done that, but obviously it was not.
Technically, we can go to gun shows, but we opted out of that. In regards to shipping, we're legally allowed to ship out. It just has to be another licensed dealer, and, you know, that regularly happens, so we can, we ship, we can ship out all the time, just, you know, not to an individual. Just wanted to make that clarification.
But you're transferring to individuals, you're really not, you're not, most of the time you're not transferring, you're not sending it to another dealer?
It, it happens from time to time. A lot of it's with raffles, actually, so manufacturer will send us, and then the person isn't around here to actually do it, so we have to send it to another FFL transfer dealer, like we are.
I guess I was under the impression last time that the majority of these were sent out versus people coming to your house. So how many people come to your house, let's say, on a monthly basis to pick up whatever they've purchased?
In the last week, or last few weeks, we've been averaging maybe two to four people, somewhere in there. It's been pretty low lately. The highest rate it would be was over initial COVID. That's just because of the rate of the industry at the time.
And, and what was that? What was?
I'd have to look it up, but it was, you know, four times that, maybe.
So it would be like 16 people, possibly?
You know, you know, yeah.
Per month?
Per week?
Per week or month?
During that short window of time. And that was, that was so much higher than it's ever been. And then it tapered right off again, and like I said, we're two to four. I had two last week, three the week prior.
So in essence, it would be approximately 20 people a month?
Under, slightly under, say. I usually tend to have them come out in one of two days, because it's only by appointment. I usually tend to have them come out in one of two days, because it's only by appointment.
Anyone else have any thoughts or questions? Clarification or anything? So as we've discussed, we have a couple of different options here, but we also need, we also can keep in mind that we did have ninety days, the clock started when we met on that meeting in January, on January eleventh, to come to a final conclusion on this, and we would have to have this decided. It looks like April eleventh, the two thousand twenty-two meeting would be our, our final meeting in which we could review and make a decision on this, should we want to.
I guess, I have one more question for Mr. Baumgarten, if I could. So, assuming, let's say we did do the suggested modification motion here, what, what, has the city decided what it would do with number seven? I mean, in terms of, like, if you were to ask Wolverine Armory to annually submit paperwork noting the number and type of transactions, I mean, it doesn't seem like that in itself would overwhelm the city. I mean, that's a pretty specific kind of, I mean, would you guys do that, or?
If it becomes a, a part of the requirement, then absolutely, we would, we'd fulfill that.
It just says the city may require. I mean, if, if we put, I guess, the city may require into our motion, I, to me, that kind of makes it just seem like you guys can ask for it if you want it.
If you felt that that was something that you needed in order to have the monitoring, then you could say the city shall, and you could even specify which department it went to and who.
We can.
Yeah, you, you absolutely could. One thing, two things I want to stress to you is, like, in, in the zoning ordinance, you are the interpreting body. So appeals are very unusual, they don't come up very much, but this is one of your jobs as a zoning board of appeals member. Also, in terms of zoning versus planning, planning, you plan for the best-case scenario, like when you went through the last master plan process. Zoning, you usually zone for the worst-case scenario. So it doesn't, and, and when you're crafting zoning, which essentially kind of you are here, is that what the person has done before, while that can come into what you're thinking, it's really looking at what they could do in the future and the breadth of what they could do in the future. And then, if the breadth is this federally, it's a type-one license, you know that at least some aspects of that you feel do not fit into the town-based business because it's retail in nature and it's a direct sale, and that the transfer is a bit of a gray area that you would be willing to look at, not only for this, but for other things. But how you monitor that and how you enforce that is, you have to keep in mind, what tools does the city have? And can they do that effectively, when essentially you don't have a lot of help from the ATF in that? Other things that you can do is you can direct the planning commission to look at this definition and look to rewrite it, to say that it's not clear, it's, you know, that this is something that needs to be looked at, and you can ask them to do that. And keep in mind, the city has, I believe, City Manager Baumgarten budgeted for a zoning ordinance update?
Yes.
If the entire zoning ordinance was updated, that would be part of that, but keep in mind that that would probably be a one- to two-year process. So you wouldn't be working with that new definition for a year or two.
Mr. Willner?
Essentially, if we accepted the modification and granted this, somebody, and, and maybe he would never have a direct sale. Somebody else can come in and we have to, and they, they can essentially get, they will be allowed to have it, because we've already said that you can have this business, and they may, the license allows direct sales.
It could be direct sales of guns or dogs, right?
So how do you, how do we police that, or how do we, I mean, how is it? Who, who, I mean, I guess that's where I struggle the most, is.
I mean, if we play that out, like, if we, I think if we adopted this modified one, I think it would still, Mr. Baumgarten's kind of ruling, I think, would still kind of stand. It's just we're kind of narrowing the scope. So if, 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 if somebody else comes along and tries to get the same firearms license, my understanding of that is automatically, it would operate according to the same kind of thing we carved out, right? I mean.
So to try to play it out, as someone is applying for their ATF license, the ATF should be coming to us to say, "Is this an allowable use under the city's zoning code?" We would respond, "Yes," based on this modification. Is, you know, here's, here's a copy of our zoning code, as long as they meet this, we have no issues with it. And then the, it's, it's a, their license is held solely with the, the federal, with ATF. As Megan said, there, there is no additional license that's required of the, of a home-based business. We just could not answer in the affirmative when the ATF asked us, "Was this an allowable use at the local level?" We couldn't say yes to that because of our interpretation of the business model and the city's ordinance. So once this is in place, same questions posed, we say yes, ATF says, "Thank you, we'll handle it from here."
It's also extremely difficult now to get a home-based FFL license as of six years ago.
My way of thinking is if, the modification, I don't think is going to, like, if we did the modification, it seems like it'd be fairly narrow, like, we're not going to set some sort of huge broad precedent. Whereas, if we, if we do the, if we do the opposite, it, it, it seems like a broader precedent. Like, if we say that this is definitely, with all the, with all the kind of evidence that's been presented to us, you know, which kind of indicate that most of what's hap, I don't know, there's some going the other way, but a lot of the evidence kind of presented that it's mostly transfers going on here. I think if we go ahead and just leave this in place exactly as it is, it's almost like that has a broader impact going forward than if we did the modification.
Again. My concern is, who among city staff is going to monitor this? You know, you can set ordinances and restrictions in place, but if there is no way of monitoring them, then it, it is a futile exercise. And I don't feel that we have adequately addressed who is going to verify compliance with this narrow scope that is in item number six of the motion, the proposed motion. Nobody.
So if we just enforce it as is, and then any other person who's, you know, let's use the Craigslist example. Any other person, like, if anybody, anybody calls the city and makes a complaint about somebody selling things on Craigslist, are we saying that the precedent then is that the city's got to send somebody out there, have conversations, and then, what, do this process in front of us, or, or send them a letter like this? I mean, that just seems absurd to me.
That's why I, I, I don't feel that the motion that is before us really addresses the issue at hand. Megan, a quick question. Would it be possible for the planning commission to look at this particular section and provide some clarity for the ZBA? Or would that, there's not enough time, it, it would be a much more prolonged exercise?
You could ask them for their input on the definition of home occupation. However, by ordinance, it is not their job to interpret. It is their job to craft zoning, recommend it, and city council approve it, is the zoning board of appeals' job to interpret it.
To interpret it.
If you don't feel that the motion before you, and again, I drafted the motion based on what I, what I had discerned from the last meeting. But there, again, you can affirm Mr. Baumgarten's letter, you can modify it, his decision, in some way, and maybe it's not those things that are listed, or you can reverse it entirely. You would have to make findings for, for those. You know, and I think if you're struggling for, for more information, what I would challenge you to think about is, to what end? Do you need the more information in order to make a decision, or are you needing more information in order to not make the decision right now? Eventually, the decision's going to need to be made, and probably you're going to have some disagreements amongst you as a board. So I would say to know that, and then it might just be time to make some motions, one way or another, have people make decisions and see where they stand.
This is more parliamentary. If we, for instance, make a motion for the draft motion here, and it's voted down, then can we go back and make a motion to affirm and, or reverse, or is that it and it's done?
Nope, if the motion fails, you can make another motion to affirm or to reverse.
Okay.
Megan, if I may, I apologize for, I did not mean to say anything bad about your motion. I know. I know that as a staff person, you are in a very difficult situation. So please excuse me, I did not mean to say something bad about your, your motion.
Oh, I just wanted to say that, to say that that's where it came from, and I, I fully recognize, as a professional planner, often I get it wrong, and I'm happy to hear input about how to do it, and it's also your decision as this board for your community. So what you're comfortable with is the most important thing.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, so we have an idea of what our next steps can be. Does anyone have a desire to move forward with something?
I'm ready to make a motion that the City of Berkeley Board of Zoning Appeals finds that a modification of the administrative decision by City Manager Baumgarten to deny Wolverine State Armory as a home occupation based upon the definition of home occupation in Section one-three-eight dash three-two of the city's ordinances is warranted based on the following findings. At the public hearing held on January eleventh, two thousand twenty-two, additional information was provided by the applicant, his business partner, residents of the adjacent neighborhood, and the general public. Based on the testimony by the business owner at the public hearing, Wolverine State Armory has paid for facilitating paperwork for the transfer of ownership of firearms between his customers and a third party. Type-one federally licensed firearms dealers allows both direct sales and of firearms and the transfer of ownership. The City of Berkeley can restrict to a home-based business of this nature to transfers only. The city will, the City of Berkeley will restrict to a home-based business of this nature to transfers only for compliance with the definition of a home-based business. Residents from neighboring properties testified at the public hearing that Wolverine State Armory does not generate more vehicular or foot traffic than single-family homes in the neighborhood. While the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms and Explosives cannot restrict direct sales of this type of license, the ATF, if made aware of municipal restrictions on licenses, will look for compliance with those restrictions as part of its inspections and license renewal processes. Number seven, the city shall require the following for Wolverine State Armory or any type-one federally licensed firearm dealer operating in the city as a home occupation. Advertising of any nature may not include direct sales, annual submittal of paperwork noting the number and the type of transactions. The city will monitor this to the best of their ability.
Could I just add one more to potentially number seven? And that being that the city also monitor any change of ownership for that particular property? And if that does transpire, that the ATF is, appropriate step B, that we contact the ATF and let them know that there's a change of ownership for that particular piece of property?
Okay.
Just because if, 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 for whatever reason, he is not living in that particular piece of property, then, then I don't want this to continue as if he's residing there, and he is not.
Okay.
And I don't know how, I, I don't think I'm explaining it right. Thoughts?
Can I ask a question about that last?
Is there a second?
Can I ask a question about the last subpart before we vote on the second? So this runs with the land, right, or is that what we're saying, like it, like?
No, so this is a modification on the decision, so this would be all the way around, but, and, and this would be specific to Wolverine State.
So why do we need that?
It's not a use variance.
Right, so wait, why do we need the, the, the part D?
Why not?
Part C.
No, the suggested, well, I thought part C that he added was that the City of Berkeley will monitor it to the best of their ability. And then I think.
Well, it says if, if they move for the license file of the business, and they said there is a process to file an amendment to the license where the change of address needs to be made. And what I'm saying is, if he no longer lives in that particular, the app, the, the, the license is granted based upon him residing at one-four-nine-zero Franklin. Is that my correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Or at least that the business.
Yeah.
But he also stated he is the property owner, and he, he owned that particular home. And so what I'm saying is, if he doesn't own that home at some point, I don't think the license, like, then, then.
Should go with the property.
Right.
Wouldn't that be automatic?
Yeah, that, that has to do with the ATF. If I were to file that paperwork to transfer to a different address, that would no longer be at fourteen ninety, it would be at the new address.
What I'm, what I'm saying, though, is if we find out that you are no longer on the deed of that particular property, I want to be able to contact the ATF and say, "You no longer own that property where that license has been issued."
From an enforcement standpoint, we can commit to notifying the ATF should we find out that that property is transferred, uh, is transferred hands. We, but that would be the city's role, is just merely report that to the ATF.
Right, exactly.
That's within the city's purview.
Just to that point, I would have already notified them that.
You know what, I, I guess we've had a lot of gray, so I want to make us, if we are making a ruling and a modification, we're going to be very specific on, on what we're asking the city to monitor.
So can you just, and I know we're kind of crafting this on the fly, but can you restate that, what I think will be D again, it'll say what, it'll be?
C.
C, right?
Well, I thought that he added, monitor best of their ability.
Yeah, I added, the city will monitor to the best of their ability, yeah, would be C, and then D would be.
The city may require.
Could I make a suggestion?
Yes.
That the city will commit to notifying the ATF if the, if, if Mr. Noak's name is removed from the deed on the property.
Right, and, and I'm just going back to when he applied the first time, the property owner, he was renting, and the property owner had to provide a letter stating that he was okay with that use of that.
Correct.
So I just want to make sure that if someone were to buy that house, then that letter should come from them, like, that can still happen in the house that they own versus him no longer owning the house.
Okay, well, I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion by Gazund, a support by Euler. Roll call vote, Madam, Madam Chair?
We can discuss stuff if we want, right?
Yep, go ahead.
We. Well, I don't know, I just, if anybody else wanted to say anything, I mean, I, I think it's the best, most narrow course, to be honest, and I, 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 I'm still uncomfortable with the precedent too of, 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 of the optics of this. And the, the, the fact remains that based on all the neighbors that got up last time, you know, somebody made a false complaint and based on politics really, and they're, they're getting what they want if we, I, I don't, I just.
I don't know though, if he's saying that there's, what did he say? Twelve to sixteen people a week going in and out of there, I mean, that's, and it says.
But, but the other thing, and I, I guess the other thing I'd say is, and I, you know, I'm, I'm one of the more anti-gun peoples around, but when I've read about this and looked into this, like, it's not a bad thing that you have somebody doing the paperwork and doing this thing. You're always gonna have somebody who can, you know, go to Field and Stream or go to wherever and get a gun pretty quickly.
But it's.
These kinds of things, I, I mean, we don't like it because it's Berkeley and you know there's a gun there, but, you know, I came into, to last week having a very negative opinion of this whole thing, you know, of, of the applicant and I, and all those people got up and it's like, he was a good citizen, everybody said he was doing a good job and they liked having him there and there are never any complaints and, you know, somebody made up this bogus complaint and sent us the ATF and here we are.
Mr. Euler, if you go to Field and Stream or Sportsman or any of those other, they're in a commercial zoned area, they're not in an R-one zoned residential area.
I understand that, but, you know, you, you don't, you don't, you don't hear people like, I don't know, this is getting pretty far-fetched. When was the last time you heard of somebody opening up fire as soon as they got out of the place they got the gun? I mean, that's not.
Well.
That's not how this goes down normally, it's like the guy's, he's doing something that needs to be done with guns, I mean, I, I wish guns were banned, but they're not gonna be, you know, he's,
Madam Chair.
It's, it's, it's a political thing and it, 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 it had the appearances that when it got here and it's, I don't like the optics of it, the way it went down.
As the enforcement body, I, I want to do note that this was not a, a political decision from the city. The, the ATF asked a very narrow question, which is would, is this allowed under the city zoning code? And if it wa, no matter what it was, um, no matter what was being sold, no matter what, uh, what the item was, no matter what kind of gentleman, uh, Mr. Noak is, no, no matter anything else. We had to answer the question that was asked of the city, which is, is this an allowable use under the city zoning code? And that is what we could not answer in the affirmative, it is not a judgment on what's being sold, the gentleman selling them, um, you know, the community at all. It was whether or not we could answer in the affirmative, the very narrow question asked. This allows us to answer yes in the very narrow question asked. Uh, this would allow us to, uh, answer in the affirmative to the ATF and, uh, Wolverine State Armory would be able to continue its use as it has been so far. But, uh, I, I do want to note, we did not, this is not a political action, uh, this is not a politically based enforcement of the city zoning code.
But, but the, but the origins seem to me, and, and before it came to you, the way it came to you, you see what I'm saying? I mean, like, it was, you know, i- i- if he was selling tea, it wouldn't be here, you know? Somebody's not gonna make up a bogus complaint about that and the, the way it came to the ATF, the way it came to you, is this somebody made up this thing about, you know, all these people flooding to the doors and blah, 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 and that's just not true.
But, but we also have to remember we had people who came in front of us or wrote to us and said, people come to my house, I don't do this and they.
One person said, one person said they, they come to the, with the same number, right? I mean.
Yeah.
No, nobody, nobody said that there's, there, there's lines of people massing up at the house to buy things, nobody said that. Except the one person who I guess falsely said it was triggered this whole thing in motion.
So does the application request every three years come to us, no matter if there is a complaint or not?
No, uh, the reason it came to us with this question mark was that the ATF had nothing on file that said we had previously permitted it.
Oh, so it had nothing to do with the complaint then?
That, that's why the ATF had to reach out to us, they would have otherwise investigated the, the complaints specific to their process. Uh, but as they reviewed the file, they, they asked the question about, is this permitted?
The reason they were asking the question is because they got the complaint.
No.
License renewal.
The license renewal triggered the request to the city, not the complaint. Because they investigated the complaint and found there was no basis for the complaint.
I wasn't privy to that part of the conversation, but my understanding, my understanding was it came to us because, um, they were looking through the checklist that they needed to pursue to, uh, at the ATF level and that's when they noted that there was no previous permission from the local government, um.
So not in two thousand seventeen, they have no record of us approving it in two thousand seventeen?
Not, not according to.
Seven years ago.
Did, did we not have the email of the ATF forwarding it to the city of Berkeley?
That wasn't the previous packet.
Right, but, but, but hold on, my question, we originally started this whole thing by saying in two thousand seventeen, when this license was originally granted, there is nothing in our records that state we even addressed this request or approved it or responded either way.
There wasn't, there was an email in the packet.
We, we don't have anything though, and you can't, do you?
No, it was in the last month's packet, there was an email from an ATF agent.
No, no, I'm saying this.
Discussing with Amy Vanson, uh, then zoning board member.
There was nothing in the file.
There was nothing in the file because our, our, our records, our, our packet clearly stated there was nothing dating back to two thousand and seventeen, if I'm correct.
Do we have the previous packet?
About this particular, any information on this particular request?
However, the ATF said they wouldn't have issued, they wouldn't have granted the permit.
But there, but there's, there's just no paper.
Yes.
Right, right.
So that's what triggered them this time.
That's what they could not locate, they could not locate where the city, local government had, um, said that this was consistent with the zoning code in the past. So that's the question that they asked us, is this consistent with the zoning code? And I, and I did not mean to trigger us, a sidebar conversation, I just, I merely wanted to note that the city did not make a politically based enforcement action.
No, no, I, I, I understand that, so really, the complaint did not trigger the, the ATF to reach out to us.
The.
The, the, the renewal of the application is what started this, their inquiry with us.
According to Officer Kason, it was the complaint.
That was my understanding as well, is that as they looked through the, the complaint required them to look, start to look through their file.
Okay.
As a new agent, then what was, uh, permitted this, then worked with the, the case file before, as they were looking through, making sure that, based on the complaint, that everything was up to date, that's when this agent noted that there was a piece missing from the file and reached out to ask some information on it as, but he couldn't locate, obtain an approval. I do think, uh, based on the conversations that Ms. Luto had, uh, with Agent Kason, that, um, if he had looked through this file, found the local government's permission was there, um, he would have just addressed this directly and the city of Berkeley would not have been privy to, to the, to the conversation.
Okay. Okay, any other discussion? So we have a motion on the table, do we have a support for that motion that I might have missed, I'm sorry.
Mr. Euler. Yeah.
Okay, I'll say, so do we need a roll call, please?
Gazund.
Yes.
Krug.
Yes.
McAlpine.
Yes.
McDonald.
Yes.
Euler.
Yes.
Ward.
No.
Wilner.
Yes.
The ma, motion passes six to one.
So next up, uh, new business is application PBA zero one two two one zero six nine Eaton. It's a dimensional variance request to construct an additional, an addition on a non-conforming structure that encroaches into the required minimum fifteen feet separation distance and encroaches into the required thirty-five feet rear yard setback.
So the applicant is, um, requesting, um, to put an addition on the rear of their home, um, for first floor, um, bedroom and bathroom, um, that's universal design principles or ADA compliant. Um, there is, um, some, uh, based on Mr. Krug's request, um, the building official did go out today and measure in between the two buildings. Um, as you know, the variance, there's a variance that, um, is for fit, for the variance ask, the variance is asking for relief from the fifteen feet in between. The drawings that were submitted with the, um, plot plan, um, that came in that the building official denied because of the rear yard setback, um, said that there was less than fifteen feet. However, when the building official went out today and he used an, a laser, um, type of measurement, um, said it was sixteen feet, six inches. So I'm going to ask the board to please note that we do not have accurate measurements at this time of really what the dimension is between the two buildings. Um, I'll go through in my review how there might be some, there were some discrepancies in how the two, that house and the house next door was built. But I just want you to know, and I've talked to the applicant about this earlier today, um, and so they may be able to provide some more, um, information. But at least, um, you will need to, um, the, so that variance of the fifteen feet separation might be need to be tabled or set aside, um, however, they would still need the rear yard setback. Um, so this property is zoned R-one D, it's a single-family detached dwelling, as is all of the neighbor, neighboring properties. Um, for twenty-seven forty Gardner, that's the property in question. Um, the city has records that it's been a single-family dwelling back to nineteen fifty-nine. Um, the footprint of the building was expanded to the front in nineteen ninety when a barrier-free ramp was installed in the front of the home. The plot plan with that building permit for the ramp shows the northern side yard setback of seven feet, eleven inches. Um, so the non-conforming distance between the two houses must have been created, if it exists, um, when the house to the north at twenty-seven fifty-eight Gardner was demolished in October of nineteen ninety-five and a new house was constructed in nineteen ninety, and they have their certificate of occupancy in nineteen ninety-six. In the letter that we gave you, there was a scan of the approved plans. If you look very closely, you can see that side yard setback with twenty-seven forty in blue, so the original blueprint, it says five feet, there was no notation by the person who had signed it and put a condition that that should be eight feet. So the, really the question is in the field, is that eight feet and, or is it, and is it more than fifteen feet in between the dwellings? Um, I've told the applicant that what I would be, the only thing that I would be comfortable with at this point to prove what the distance would be, would be a registered survey by, by, stamped by a surveyor. Um, so in terms of this particular project, in January of this year, um, the applicant, Batte, the homeowner, applied for a building permit for a one-story addition to the rear of the building and the, the building official, as I stated before, denied it because the rear yard setback was too small. When the applicant came to the counter, um, myself and Kim Anderson looked at what was being submitted, Kim is the building clerk, I don't know whether any of you have had the pleasure of meeting her, um, we went through and realized that there were three variances at that point. The rear yard setback, there was less than ten feet in between the house and the detached garage and the fifth, what we believed was, according to their survey, and according to their, their drawings, less than fifteen feet in between the two dwellings. We advised them that less variances have a better chance of being approved and also one of the standards is the least amount possible. They revised and came back, you'll see that it's proposed to be more than ten feet in between the back of the addition and the detached garage, so they altered that. Um, and also whatever the distance is between the two buildings, they are keeping the same building line, so they're not bumping out the building at all, it's flush with that side facade. Um, so if there is a non-conforming, they're increasing it by going back, but they're not making it any greater. Um. So in terms of the, the, again, there's a rear yard setback of, the required is thirty-five feet, the proposed addition has, is twenty-seven, six feet, so that would be a variance of seven feet, six inches. Um, and the discrepancies in the drawing and the ones that we received, um, they, there is at least fifteen feet, they're saying that they need two feet, six inches of a variance in between those. But again, that seems to be in play and I would hope that you would ask the applicant for more details when they come and do a presentation. Um, in terms of the standards for the rear yard setback, um, whether the need is, the variance is due to unique circumstances or physical conditions of the property, um, the house currently has two bedrooms and they're on the second floor only. So there's not a bedroom that's on the first floor. Um, I'm unsure whether there's a full bath on the first floor and again, hope the applicant can answer that question as well. Um, in terms of the second standard that you look at, the need for the variance is not the result of the actions of the property owner or previous property owners. In terms of the rear yard setback, it's created by the need of the, the, the need for the variance as a result of the property's owner desire to build this bedroom and bath, um, and specifically meeting universal design or ADA, ADA compliance. Um, C, a strict compliance with the ordinance would not reasonably prevent the property owner from using the property for a permitted purpose or render conformity with those regulations unnecessarily burdensen. Strict compliance with the ordinance will not prevent the homeowner from extending the footprint of the building to the rear. However, due to the location of the house and the detached garage on site, strict compliance would prevent an addition to build that first floor bedroom, again, of this type of design where a wheelchair could navigate it because there's a certain depth and width that needs to be there. Um, the her, house is configured, doesn't accommodate the needs of the quadriplegic family member. The applicant has stated in their, in, application that installation of lifts to allow access to the second floor is unnecessarily, is unnecessarily burdensen. Um, the fourth standard that you need to look at is the requested variance is the minimum variance to do substantial justice to the applicant as well as other property owners. Um, the requested variance is the minimum variance necessary to do justice for the property owner for the first floor bedroom and a bath, meeting those design principles again. A smaller addition meeting, not meeting those ADA compliance or universal design, um, is possible. Um, and the requested variance is the final standard, the requested variance will not adversely impact surrounding properties. Um, the city has not received any correspondence from neighbors related to these requested variances. Um, in terms of the separation distance, I don't want to go through all the standards at this point in time until we have some more clarification on the distances. Um, but, but ask you to note that, looking back in records, it seems like you have granted variances before, um, where somebody was extending to the rear, um, when that noncon, where, where that separation distance was non-conforming and it seemed to be fine with the board as long as it didn't increase, it didn't bump out and increase that non-conformity. Um, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions for Ms. Minock?
Well, first off, I didn't get one of those packets for this, this particular.
Okay.
No, no, if you don't have one, that's fine.
I have it pulled up electronically.
I can.
Here, you can have my report.
He's. There we go. Sorry, huh? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Okay, so do we have any questions for Ms. Minock at this point? If not, if the petitioner is here or the representative, they could come to post the podium, please give your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, my name is Michael Ely, my address is sixty-eight sixty-five Galloway Bay Drive, Troy, Michigan. Happy Valentine's Day, everybody.
Thank you. So if you could just give us, um, a, a brief overview of what you're, what you're looking to do and why you need the variance.
Yeah, so we're, uh, we're trying to build an addition, uh, for this family and, you know, we ca, we could go up, we'd have to install lift, they start at like forty thousand dollars, they're exorbitantly expensive, unnecessary in this situation. We're not asking for a large variance in the back, we started with three and brought it down to one, thanks Megan, appreciate that. And so we're just asking for just a rear variance to, to, uh, to kind of pass that. And that would make it, um, more manageable. I think that if, if we, we could stay within the current variances of the city, but it would just be so small that it wouldn't be worth it and it wouldn't be feasible. would just be so small that it wouldn't be worth it, and it wouldn't be feasible, and I don't even think it would be ADA compliant, it definitely wouldn't be ADA compliant. So, that's why we're asking for, especially the setback variance. Like Megan said earlier, I think to table the second request, the second variance, we really don't need, you know, it seems like if that was measured today at 16 foot and a half, of course, we'd need a survey if we move forward with the project. But it seems like if we could table that and just go after the rear variance, that would be fantastic. But that's really the desire.
Okay. And then just, so we could rule on one, table the other one, he doesn't have to reapply, we can get the information, come back and address the second one at our next meeting, if that's what we decided.
Yes, that's what you decided. Can I ask the applicant two questions? Number one, where are the bedrooms in the house currently located?
So, there was a little confusion here, because as I read this this afternoon in preparing for the meeting, it is a, it is a single-story home, so it is not, doesn't have a second floor, and so everything is on the single story. But it is a two-bedroom, one-bath home, and with the, the number of, the fam, the size of the family living there, it's considerably too small, and it's not ADA compliant. So, this would assist in bringing it up to ADA compliance.
So, none of the bedrooms that are in the current home are ADA compliant or Universal Design compliant? Someone couldn't access the bedroom or a bath?
I mean, it's, it can be accessed, but it is not ADA compliant. So, there is not ADA compliance as of now. So, this would, this would aid in the home becoming more ADA compliant by putting this addition on with the size of it is.
Are there other ways to make it ADA compliant without building a lift or an addition?
Not really, unless we, unless we just kind of, yeah, I mean, we could go, I mean, normally in this situation, we would just go up, we would just build a second floor, and we would have, we'd be able to do that in the City of Berkeley, we've built other additions in the City of Berkeley, we could go up. But in this situation, that would make it very difficult, because we need a lift, it just wouldn't be practical for, for what the family needs. And so, we're limited on a couple of variances, and that's why we're looking to do this.
Couldn't you have the second floor, if you went up, the second-floor bedrooms be for the other occupants of the house, and trans somehow renovate a first-floor bedroom bathroom to be?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that could potentially be a potential outcome. It's, it's extremely, it's a lot more expensive, obviously, but that's something that could be done, yes. We're trying to bring the, the best value to, to the client, to the Dabish family, for the situation that they're in.
Do we know what the lot coverage is?
Lot coverage, this is there. 5,750 square feet. Oh, the percentage of lot coverage currently, 22.7%. And with the total of pros, with the total proposed addition, it's going to go to 26%. Almost 27%. And what's the maximum lot coverage, 35?
30.
30, okay, so we're still below on lot coverage.
How many occupants are living in the home?
Um, three, currently. So, that was kind of the reason why I wanted to add another bedroom, because there's only two bedrooms right now, three occupants, all adults.
Are there any, are there any other questions for the petitioner?
About one. On the bathroom on the rear here that you're adding, is that going to be ADA compliant? Or is that just adding a second bathroom to the house?
We would make it ADA compliant, yeah.
Just looking at the drawings, I've done several of them and seen it.
Yeah, it's not there yet, we, we wanted to get the setback resolved, this would be the foot, the exact footprint we'd go for, but yeah, we would, we would make it ADA compliant. I had my architect working on this, and then he got too busy, and I shifted it over to one of my project managers, and so, too many cooks in the kitchen a little bit on the, on the design, but yeah, we would make it ADA compliant, that's it.
Is there room width-wise to make that bathroom and the bedroom ADA compliant, if it's not indicated on the drawing?
From my understanding, yes.
How large would the bedroom then be, as well as the bathroom?
I believe the bedroom is, the new addition totals 240 square feet, and I believe the, the new bedroom is, is about, you know, it's about 10 six by 11, so 100-some square feet.
But if it was made smaller to comply with the necessary setback?
Yes, then it would be significantly smaller, we'd have to reduce it apparently by, because we're asking for a variance of what, seven foot, seven foot six, we're asking for?
Yeah.
So, yeah, it'd be reduced by seven foot, which is significant. It'd be, yeah, it'd be too small to actually be compliant for anything. For, it wouldn't even meet Universal Compliance.
So, the drawing that, that's here showing the bathroom, I mean, they definitely don't have a five-foot, it's hard to tell in the drawing, but you definitely don't have a five-foot turning radius, or you don't have approach to the sink, even, that you, that would be ADA compliant. It certainly doesn't look like it in the drawing, and I don't know how you would attain that, because that door's not even wide enough, it's a 28 door, you wouldn't get a 3.
Right, yeah, it's 28, the door's too small, for sure.
You don't have an approach to the sink or a five-foot turning circle, turning radius at the tub and the bath and the toilet, unless it's just.
Yeah, those would be, those would be modified. So, I was going to have him do that, but we were, we were pressed for time, and so, I was just hoping we're getting after the footprint itself, and then we could make that modification for approval later, because that wouldn't be needed for approval by the, the board. So, my apologies for that.
Actually, we're not determining what goes in the addition, it's covering the setback.
So, he wouldn't be able to approach the sink?
But technically, we are just determining whether they should be able to build out, extend the non-conformity, not, not, extend it, not expand it.
You're deciding whether the addition as proposed should be allowed based on findings about the property or the building itself. And they're asking for, they've been noticed for two variances, one for the rear yard setback. It sounds like you feel like you might need more information in order to assure that things are, as the applicant has reported in their application. So, if you're concerned about the ADA compliance or the Universal Design, you could approve it conditional on, you could, number one, ask, table it and ask them to come back next month with that information. Two, you could approve the variance condition upon them submitting drawings that are then reviewed by the building official, and that they need to be ADA compliant to allow full access to the bathroom and the bedroom. Again, whatever you choose to do, it asks you to make findings about the particular building, so that the building doesn't have, that the building doesn't have, in this case, bedrooms that are fully accessible for someone in a wheelchair, rather than making a finding that there is a family member who is a quadriplegic, because it has to be about the building or the property.
Okay. Does that make sense to everyone?
Yeah, I like that.
I have a question. How much more would it cost to just make, you know, the bathroom that's there ADA compliant, and then build upwards for the other people? No lifts, because then you wouldn't have to do lifts, right?
Well, yeah, I mean, technically, it would still, the cost would probably be, is that footprint, I mean, I'm spitballing here, because, you know, I haven't obviously, but probably double at this point. The general cost of this addition right here would be around $100,000. If we went up, it'd probably be closer to 200. And then the family would have to, you know, leave the, leave the dwelling for six to eight months for the work to be completed. This way, it's on the back of the house, it doesn't disturb.
How are they living in there now? How, how's that, how are they making it work?
Um, I can, I can ask you guys, can she come up and?
Sure, absolutely, we just need her to state her name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm a sister of the owner, which is Sam here, so right now.
Can you just state your na, um?
Jihan Alonso.
You can pull that down, yeah.
Okay.
And then your address, please.
I am at 686 Mohegan in Birmingham, 48009. So, speaking on behalf of my brother, so it is my mom, and she's in, what, 76? How old is mom? So, my older mother, my sister, who also has muscular dystrophy, and my brother, who's quadriplegic. So, in speaking about an addition to go up, stairs are also a challenge for some of the people that are currently living there. So, right now, there are two rooms, it's a, kind of like the backside of the house facing, um.
North.
North, yep, thank you. And then the bathroom is set in the middle. So, the rooms, he kind of gets in and out of, has, you know, kind of a sharp corner, he is able to get in and out of his bedroom currently, he's not able to get into the bathroom. So, everything that is happening in a bathroom currently happens in his room, so brushing of the teeth, everything. So, that's currently how they're living. My mom also has accessibility to the basement, which is stairs, and she, you know, resides down there in, in that room. So, three people, three rooms, inaccessible, inaccessible.
Two, you have two handicapped people living in the residence?
So, yeah, so my older sister, she's in her 50s, she has muscular dystrophy, so as you know, that kind of progresses as you get older, so.
Yes.
That is, she has had one fall down the stairs, so she resides on the main level where he is, and then my mom will either sleep on the couch or in the basement. So, yeah, this will give them a lot of accessibility and space, not just my brother, but my mom and my sister as well. Yep. Any other questions?
Is, is there, is there a lift to help the other people get up and down the stairs, or?
Nope.
Okay. Can that be applied for, maybe through Medicaid or?
Um, I mean.
Medicare or something?
My mom is the only one that's really going up and down the stairs right now, and she's still the most abled person, so she's just doing it with an under rail at this point. Something we could look forward in the future.
I'm, I'm disabled, I get, I get 15 things in the, in my email every, every day, asking for a pain-relieving knee brace or hip replacement surgery. And I'm just wondering if, if you've explored those options.
Not, not that one in particular, no. The, the need for this extra, I mean, that's not obviously going to be paid by Medicaid, but that kind of solves more of the problems in a bigger way, but yeah, something we could look into, for sure.
Okay.
Mr. Gesund, currently being a new person on Medicare, Medicare does not pay for many things, such as canes, braces, walkers, so I sincerely doubt they would pay for a lift, because those are very expensive.
I think it took, what, three months to get a battery? Yeah, three to four months, just to, and that's his mobility, and it was challenged quite a bit, so. It's just into our own hands to try to, or me and my husband, trying to help where we can to make it more livable for them, and stay in Berkeley, obviously, in that home that they've had for quite some time now.
Is the basement finished?
Partially finished, there's drywall, lighting, plumbing, but it's, you know, mainly storage right now, laundry room.
And there's no bathroom in the basement?
No.
Probably not eager.
One, yeah, there's only one bathroom in the house currently. Yeah.
Are there any other questions, ever? If not, I think we're good, thank you.
Thank you.
If we have no more questions for the petitioner, I will go ahead and close this portion of the hearing, and then open it up to see if there is anyone in the audience, are we good with the petitioner at this point? Okay, great. So, I will officially close this portion of the meeting and request that if there's anyone from the audience who wishes to speak, if you could please approach the podium and state your name and address for the record, please. We have no one here present to speak on that, so I will go ahead and close the portion of the public hearing and open it back up to my fellow commissioners to have a discussion about the, the two, the variance requests that have been presented to us.
The, the letters were sent out to the neighbors at such a distance, were there any responses?
There were no responses, nothing, nothing.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Ward?
Yeah. We have a five-point rule, we call it, for board members, that in order to approve a variance, all five of these rules need to be addressed. And even though the one variant, the one item for a variance says that the property owner is not causing the reason for the request of the variance, I, I would say that in this particular situation, we have a hardship case, and that in order for the family to be able to continue to live in the existing dwelling, that it would be necessary. And again, because of his disability and the disability and the age of the other two residents that live in the home, that even, even if we denied the variance, what they would build would not suitably accommodate the needs of the current residents. In my situation, my parents lived here in Berkeley, their house was large enough that we were able to convert the dining room into a bedroom. Not everybody has that opportunity or the size of their home. So, I, I think that what we're looking at here is definitely a hardship situation for the owner and for the two people that live with him, and I would call them caretakers.
So, are you making a motion to approve the first, the rear yard setback, Marion?
Yes.
Based upon meeting the five criteria that are required in order to approve?
Approve it, yes. And that because this is a hardship case.
Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll support.
Support by Krug?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, we'll go ahead and take a roll. Any other discussions or comments?
Um, one question, do we want to table item two?
I think we'll, we'll vote on item one, and then we can address item two.
Okay, so we're separating, okay.
Can we just, Ms. Ward, is it okay if we do make that motion, that when the plans come in front of the building department, that that design is appropriate for, to meet the ADA standards?
ADA requirements, yes.
Requirements, and I understand the fact that it hasn't been totally fleshed out, but I think with that addition.
Well, I think, that is my thinking, and why I am considering the larger size of the bathroom and the bedroom, is so that it will be ADA compliant.
So, we'll make sure that that's part of the motion, is that, that we'll add that piece of it as well?
Right, yes. And will Mr. Krug accept the?
Yes.
Change to the motion? Thank you.
I have a question for staff, if I can.
Sure.
Is there a mechanism or some sort of exception we can cite or should cite to do this?
I didn't hear the question, Mr. Ullin.
Is there some sort of mechanism or exception or something we can cite or should cite when we do this? Mechanism, or exception, or something we can cite, or should cite when we do this? Like, um. I don't know, does the?
The need for the variance is unique.
Like an ADA?
Yeah.
So, I mean, I, I think that what you could say in terms of looking at those five, i- in terms of looking at those five items, is that.
Like, how do we phrase it so it's more property-ish, right, like?
Yes, so.
Do you got suggestions?
We have here the need for the variance as a result of the property owner's desire to build a first-floor bedroom and bath, meeting universal design requirements.
And I would add that there's unique circumstances to the existing home that prevents, that, that prevent, that, that prevents. That there are unique circumstances in the home that. Prevent full access for people of all abilities.
Okay.
Because, again, to tie it back to the property, in terms of that the need is not the result of actions of the property owners, or previous property owners. It quite frankly is the result of that, but they didn't build the original house, so I think you could say, find that they didn't build the original house, and so, and the need for the, and the, the need for the. The ADA compliance has come over time through no fault of their own.
Okay, are we comfortable with that?
Yes.
Yeah, just fill that in.
Yep. Sorry, Megan.
Sorry.
You stated it so eloquently, if you can just remember.
And there's a recording.
Yes, perfect.
And I also believe you will be reviewing the plans, along with the building inspector.
It would be that, that there's a requirement that the design would be reviewed by the, by the building official, I, I would prefer the building official, not me, because I, I do not have the expertise to do that well. Um, and I know that he does, um, that they meet ADA format, ADA requirements.
Perfect. Okay, then I think we're ready for a motion on the, or a roll call vote on that, please.
Gazund.
Yes.
Krug.
Yes.
McAlpine.
Yes.
McDonald.
Yes.
Euler.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Willner.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, so next up would be, the, then be their, um, the variance that they are requesting for the separation distance between dwellings. And that is the one that I believe we have to.
Table.
We should have a motion to table, so, don't we need the petitioner to request that we table this particular item, or can we table that?
You, you don't need them to request it, you, you can do that.
Okay.
Well, can I ask a question before we proceed? Judging from the information that was provided by Megan, um, it appears as though both the contractor and the building inspector um, made a mistake. And. Since it's a city mistake. Shouldn't there be an automatic granting of the variance, um, if the board approves it, uh, because there was an error when the building inspector reviewed the plans and reviewed what was constructed?
I would say that that wasn't an error, what was given to him on the plans, um, said that there was a variance needed. He does not go out and inspect every single plan that is submitted, if he did that, that's all he would do.
Okay.
So I think, um, what I would say is that there is a, and, and the building official only went out today because Board Member Krug asked that he, that someone go and confirm those, those dimensions, it's unusual for us to do that.
Well, it was interesting, I drove by today as well, and I thought, in my opinion, that there was fifteen feet, that it, I, when I looked at that, I thought, that doesn't look um, too narrow, a, a space between the two buildings. So, um, Commissioner Cruz, or Board Member Cruz, congratulations, that was a good catch.
I was gonna get my own tape measure out, but, but uh, no, let's the official do it.
Well, you can do it with your phone, you have a, a measuring device on your phone as well.
Then it becomes official of, of our part, so.
Okay, so I, it can't be done automatically, because, okay?
And I think it's very important that the proper paperwork is on file at the city, um, because I can tell you, in the past three months that I've been here, I, you've building file folders this thick, they're very helpful. Um, and they help to explain the situation and what happened, but whenever that fifteen feet, there's not that fifteen feet, there's a story there, and um, I would like, in this case, for us to have documentation that gets the correct story that's on the ground.
Right, and, and I think we would also open ourselves up to a mistake being made unintentional, but then set precedent for us saying, we made the mistake, you can proceed.
Now, if we table that tonight, are they able to just withdraw that, um, once it's proven that, that's there, so they don't have to come before us?
Yes, they could just withdraw it.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
If you're open.
Go right ahead.
I'll move on the side variance, that we table the matter until um, proper inspections can be made, and measurements done, uh, to legitimize the actual distance between the two dwellings. The um, two-seven-four-zero Gardner, and the property to the north, which is two-seven-five-eight Gardner.
One second.
Thank you.
So, motion by Ward, second by Willner.
Yes, so we'll take a, a vote, I'm sorry.
Um, Gazund?
Yes.
Krug?
Yes.
McAlpine?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Willner?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay. So if they need to come back, then we will put them on the agenda for the next meeting, and if not, we will assume that everything is done, and they are good to go.
Will we, will we need another public hearing for this, or?
If they don't need the variance, and they won't come in front of us.
It will be withdrawn.
It will, they'll withdraw it, and they can go ahead and proceed to getting their plans approved, once they've got them redesigned. Yes, we're good, thank you.
Thank you.
So next up is, uh, on our agenda is other business, is there any other business that we need to discuss? Seeing as there is none, then we will move to uh, our staff and board member report.
You have the community development report at your desks, happy to answer your questions, the one thing I will note is that, um, the dimensional variance that you heard last month on Royal.
Yeah, what happened?
Um, they've withdrawn their application entirely.
Oh, okay, good.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, Councilman Henanen, do you have anything that you'd like to share with us this evening?
Yeah, I have a few things, and uh, this first thing I prepared, um, before even the discussion with the Wolverine State Armory case tonight, but, you know, that are, I was going to comment, our home business ordinance needs a fresh look, and um, you clearly echoed that uh, tonight. I was recently able to attend a workshop on home-based businesses, and the Michigan Planning Association has also prepared a, a great framework for um, crafting such an ordinance, you know, specific to your community's needs, and that's a direction that I was already planning on looking into, and, and I think we've seen tonight, the need to take a deeper look at that. On our council meeting on Monday, we approved the rezoning on South Coolidge from Coolidge District to Gateway District, uh, those two zones are nearly identical, so there's no practical difference in it. However, it moves the new zone closer to what the master plan calls for, and um. The property owner is proposing um, future multifamily housing at that location, and that would be compatible with the proposed future land use map, but the current zoning doesn't allow that, so there would be multiple more steps before that would, anything close to that would take place. Regarding the city's marijuana licenses, we currently, our ordinance allows for three, um, the scoring came up with a three-way tie for third place, leaving five in the top uh, three scores. Uh, and at the meeting last week, council directed staff to prepare an ordinance amendment to increase the number of uh, licenses to, from three to five. However, as of this afternoon, I'm aware of two lawsuits against the city, with uh, applicants who are unhappy with the scores they received, um, one has asked for the courts for a stay, um, the city's going to continue moving forward, but the courts may intervene, and so it may be in the court's hands again, but um, you know, as of now, we are uh, moving forward. And then finally, I just want to thank everyone for volunteering their Valentine's Day evening here, um, but I especially want to thank your significant others. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, at this point, we would open it up if there's anyone from the public who would like to speak, are there any comments that we need to read into the record? Seeing as there is none, um, it appears to be nine oh one, and I would adjourn this meeting. Thank you, everyone.